All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting this evening for October 21st. Start off our meeting, we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, as this is a, I'm gonna switch over here. Is a special meeting, there will not be any public comments at this time. Any board members and participants, please mute your mic and disable your videos and just to note that this meeting is being recorded.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I see Director Stoffler's here. Can we make him a panelist, please?
Yes, please. Yes. Senator Prime, can we? Thank you. All right, if we could just move on to our agenda for the evening. I'm gonna have to switch over screens here. Can't quite read all of the stuff on there, so I'm gonna, sorry about that. I'm gonna switch to my board docs and read through this real quick. So Vision and Mission Statement, Community Inspires and Prepares Each Student to Thrive and Mission in Connection with Our Community, this twin school district and power staff to inspire, open, provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives. And acknowledgement of the land we stand on. The Squim School District Administrator and School Buildings sit on the ancestral land of the Skollum people. While the Skollum traditionally come from one nation, history has led to the formation of three sovereigns, Skollum, Clallum Tribal Governments, Lower Elwah, Clallum Tribe in Port Angeles, Washington, Jamestown, Skollum Tribe in Squim, Washington, the Port Gamble, Skollum Tribe in Kingston, Washington. The district's primary partnership was with the Jamestown Skollum Tribe. Today, the tribe and district share a partnership that includes official consultation on program and funding changes that may directly affect American Indian and Alaska Native students, as well as holistic service planning for students to remain successful in their educational journeys. So today's meeting is for resolution number 01, 2021, 2022, the censuring of Director James Jim Stoffer. I'm going to read through this resolution. Whereas to facilitate the ongoing and regular operations of the Squim School District and pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, the Board of Directors met in executive session on September 4th, 2021, to discuss legally confidential information related to current or potential litigation and/or complaints brought against a public employee. And whereas Policy 1620 and Procedure 1620P direct a school board director to maintain confidentiality at all times of information disclosure of which would be detrimental to district. And whereas the outcome of the September 4th, 2021 meeting established that Director Stoffer knowingly and willingly violated Policy 1620 and Procedure 1620P by disclosing to a district employee who was, has two active complaints against the district information shared confidentially with Board of Directors. And whereas Director Stoffer has served on the board six years and has had the opportunity to know and understand the obligations for confidentiality of serving as a member of the district board of directors. And now therefore, we resolved that the Squim School District Board of Directors censored Director Stoffer for engaging in ex parte conversation with district employee and disclosing confidential board information and recognizes the inability of Director Stoffer to continue to perform effectively as board member due to his violation of trust and acceptant, accepts his decision to recuse himself from confidential matters related to his previous inappropriate communications. Regrets the breach of trust that has hampered district operations and damaged the working relationships between Directors Jim Stoffer and other Directors and Senior District Administration and calls on Director Stoffer, Jim Stoffer, to resign from Squim School District Board of Directors immediately in the best interests of Squin School District, adopted and approved, or adopted for 2020, 21, October 21. Right, at this point. Would be appropriate to, before we move forward for any discussion for a motion on this resolution. Director Jeffries has his hand up.
I move to approve Board Resolution Number 01, 2021, 22, Centry, Director James Jim Stoffer.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this issue, this concern? Director Stoffer has the floor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Lindsay Schrum and Warren. I'm an attorney. Earlier this week, I volunteered to represent Director Stoffer in regard to any actions the board or the district may take to impair his ability to fulfill his duties as an elected member of the board or his reputation in the community. First, I want to address the process here. All of you know that Director Stoffer has been on an approved medical leave since you started attacking him last month. He had a doctor's appointment on Monday and his physician recommended he continue to be on medical leave until November 17. It should go without saying that an entity should not grant an approved medical leave, which means that a person will be excused from their ordinary responsibilities and given time to address the medical situation and then turn around and pursue draconian sanctions against that person for serious but non-time sensitive allegations while they are still on leave. This in itself is arguably actionable discrimination against Director Stoffer. Furthermore, basic procedural due process standards require meaningful notice and an opportunity to be heard. Director Stoffer has never been presented with a written document setting forth factual allegations against him. He has never been given the opportunity to provide a written response to allegations against them. He has not been given the opportunity to present evidence or witnesses on his behalf. He was not even notified about this meeting within the 48 hour deadline in the district's own procedure 1620P. This sequence of events makes it apparent that the board had, has no interest in giving him a meaningful opportunity to respond and defend himself. Nonetheless, here we are, so I'll read a statement by Director Stoffer to address the allegations made against him tonight.
Can I, can I, can I interject for a second? So this is a board meeting. This is for Director Stoffer. Director Stoffer should be the one that reads his own statement at this point?
Chair, respectfully, Director Stoffer's on medical leave. I am his attorney. I will read his statement. As school board directors, part of our duty is to inquire into the work our employees are doing to create a safe learning environment for our students and a healthy working environment for our staff. Interim Superintendent Dr. Jane Prime told the members of the board that she knew who submitted an anonymous citizen hotline complaint to the state auditor and identified that person by name. I asked that person if they submitted it and they said no. I did not reveal confidential information in doing so. I merely asked a question. The anonymous complaint itself is a public document. So I'm accused tonight of verifying whether the information shared with us by our employee is the truth. I did not reveal confidential information. The board has no basis for censuring me. Although differences remain in our community and amongst school leaders, let's always remember that there is far more that unites us than divides us. Together, we all believe in the future of Skolm students and in enhancing that future in every way we can. Let's keep that unifying focus on our children, whether we are serving on or off the board of Skolm schools. It is not too late for you, my fellow Skolm school directors, to try to make this right. Although the damage you have already done to my reputation by posting the draft resolution may not be repairable. The clearest action you can take to try to make this right is to vote no on this resolution. It only takes two of you to vote no and it will not pass. Don't continue this pretense of ethical superiority while you fail to fulfill your fiduciary duties to investigate what is happening in our school district. Remember, only he who is without sin can throw the first stone. Put your stones down and let's work together to create a safe learning environment for our students. Vote no tonight. Thank you.
Although this, this is not a debating session at this point, I would like to acknowledge the fact that we received a letter of medical leave from Director Stoffer on September the 17th that requested 30 days of leave. At that point, we acknowledged that, did not approve it. We acknowledged it on September the 20th. That was a 30 day medical leave. That 30 day medical leave at that point was, has subsequently passed at this point. There has not been any direct conversation or any further notification of additional medical leave at this point. Therefore, that medical leave in accordance with the document that we have received has expired at this point. I would also like to add, just as a, as stated here within, within the resolution, that this conversation happened back on September the 4th. At that point, while we met at September 4th, we had a discussion with legal counsel present. And while legal counsel was present, we did discuss the fact that, that because of the allegations and the fact that Director Stoffer did not deny at all the fact that these allegations had happened, that we would, we, we would, could potentially move towards censure. That was a month and a half ago and at this point, at that time, although Director Stoffer was in, on medical leave, we did have discussion with legal counsel on numerous occasions, determined whether this was appropriate act at that point, once he did return. And according again to our records, his medical leave has expired past 30 days and therefore we are here to move to discuss this resolution. Director Jeffries, did you have something to add? I saw your hand earlier or?
I was gonna ask if they had sent and had we received the new medical leave
No.
request from doctor?
We have not, that I have, I had nothing that I have noted at this time. So I will say this, that, that I have allowed conversation from counsel. This is not, this, this, this is a board meeting. There is not a, this is not for public comment. Director Stoffer should be representing himself at this point.
Respectfully, Chair or President Gibson, Director Stoffer did notify the board on Monday that he was consulting with his doctors. He was not present at Monday's board meeting. And in regard to the statements you just made about a closed session, you are accusing Director Stoffer of violating confidentiality, which as just explained in his statement, he did not do. But frankly, you just violated confidentiality by sharing the content of a closed session in a public meeting without waiving that confidentiality prior to doing so. Do not accuse others of things that you have done yourself, especially when the others have not done themselves.
And do we have any further discussion? Director Pickens.
This really struggled with this, this entire situation and on one hand, I can certainly attest that I know that Director Stoffer does, does care about our students and our staff and our community. I time and time again, he has, he has stepped up for our community and I believe those are qualities that, that, that are to be admired, are, should be admired. And I've had the opportunity to serve and volunteer with Director Stoffer for our community on several occasions, and I know that he is a good man and he leads with his heart. On on the other hand, there's there's this concern and I, I, I this is, this is where I, I'm, I'm sensing some problems because we've been advised by our, our, our legal counsel because of active investigations that we cannot really give the, 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 the full story as to how this information came to being. And as, as the rest of the board knows, including Director Stoffer, I, I was the one who, who came upon this information and brought, brought this information to the board that initiated all of this. However, I I feel very conflicted because I do believe that the community does deserve more information and transparency on this issue. And yet I, I respect the advice of legal councils, knowing that that, we, we, we can't share that because of the, the legal liabilities involved with that. So I'm, I'm, I'm feeling very conflicted. The other, the other few points that came up. I, I do think that there is some problematic language that, and, and we will, while speaking for myself, I will own that as, as being, being a leader in the school district, we do have some conflicting information on policies regarding dates and notice and that we need, we need to take care of that. Regarding a, a special meeting on, on one policy, I did see 24 hour notice and then another aspect referred to two day notice, one referred to a, a, a three day. And I, I apologize for getting in the weeds here, but there, there is, I do have concerns there. I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm not, this new information about the, the, the medical leave continuing. But mostly I, I want to say that I, I really before, before proceeding, what I'd really like to do is have the opportunity to share the, the full picture as to how this information came to light. With with regards to or how, how I came upon this information. I would like to tell the whole story for full transparency. I and I would like, like Director Stoffer to, to not, hopefully not be on medical leave so that he certainly can, can speak to it as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this, this censure until, until such a time to where we can fully disclose all of the parameters around it. And in which Director Stoffer will be off of medical leave. And hoping maybe I have a second.
Director Jeffries.
Point of order, there's a motion and a second on the floor currently. So an amendment could be made or we need to vote, I guess.
Respectfully, point of order, our motion to postpone supersede the main motion.
I do believe that's, that's, that's correct.
I concur with our guest's comment, motion to table would supersede the motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Provided there's, there's a second. Director Koo.
I'm happy to second to advance it to a vote. Is there a discussion around the motion to table?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I feel like I've, I've shared my reasons why, why I, I think those were captured, so I don't have any, any further discussion. I just, I feel like due process is extremely important and let's, let's make sure that, that we have, have, have given Director Stoffer the appropriate amount of time to respond. Let's make sure that this process is followed and if there's more information that is, needs to be brought to light, then let's, let's allow for that. Thank you.
You have something further, Director Koo? Your beauty, sir.
There we go. I unmuted and then muted myself. I'm comfortable tabling the matter. Even though I, I am fully confident with the advice of legal that due process is a term that's been thrown out there lately, has been followed. And I will support that. My, my other discomfort is delaying this ad infinitum. You know, the fact is, you know, there was a violation. I've struggled with this as well. It's incumbent upon us to call that out, right, wrong, or otherwise. I think the, the argument made by legal of, you know, casting the stone and things like that. I that, that doesn't make sense to me. I've, I've always acknowledged being a flawed individual who's capable of erring in the same way, but that doesn't mean this didn't happen and it doesn't need to be addressed. So I'm hesitant, given the fact that Director Stoffer has, you know, not responded in a timely manner. We only found out tonight that he still considers himself under medical leave. That's new information. So while I'm happy to accommodate for quote unquote, due process. I, I don't, I don't, I need a bookend to that as far as when this board will take this up again. And I guess since my hand's still up, the other concern I have is, you know, we, we heard a veritable chastising by Director Stoffer's lawyer about trying to answer misinformation, but then allegedly disclosing items shared in closed session. So I think everyone is begging for transparency and truth on this and that's certainly important to me. So the question I would ask, perhaps at a later time, is how best to advance truth and contrast that with a lot of misinformation that's being pushed out there.
Thank you, Director Koo. And I will just state this, just from a informational report, we did receive a, a message from Director Stoffer on Monday, just stating that he would not be part of that workshop or meeting. But there was nothing about continued medical leave due to a medical appointment, medical stuff. So Director Jeffries.
Yeah, that's my concern also, that if if we have not received an official request for medical leave, I suggest they get that in right away. It, it's apparent that that has not been received by the district. I, I have similar feelings to Director Pickens concerned about us following the letter of our Procedure 1620P. I would assume that if we're going to postpone this discussion and vote to a later date, that we would need to republish all the information published on last night about this meeting and make sure it meets the 48 hour designation. And I assume we'd have to work out the time, time and place, date, that sort of thing to accommodate the very busy schedules of everyone. That's sometimes difficult when trying to get all the parties together in one place at one time. I'm inclined to want to vote tonight. I'm not sure what the delay would do except give Director Stoffer and the public more time to react to the situation. So if the argument that Director Pickens made and the agreement that Director Koo gave to delaying for the reasons of giving due process a chance to work weighs strongly. And I will probably vote for the the new motion to delay. But I do want to bookend. I don't know, do we delay for another 30 days? And if a new medical leave is requested, do we delay for another 30 days? I'm concerned about that. I mean, I want to make sure every, well, in this kind of situation, it's very difficult to describe. Everyone wins. I'm not sure in these situations, anybody wins. But I think there's a, a necessary action that the board needs to take vote on one way or the other. And delaying it infinitum, as Director Koo mentioned, would not be good for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. Director Pickens, again.
Yeah, um, thank you. And just to, just to clarify, I'd I'd say, well, one of the things I had said in my motion is that it was back for us to return once Director Stoffer's on his medical, or conclude his medical leave would be ideal, not to say that it would continue on, but I would propose November 22nd, we, we have a special meeting to, which is on a Monday that we could wrap this up. If, if that's agreeable to, to all.
Okay, Director Jeffries.
Yeah, I'm just checking my calendar. I don't think that would be a problem. That date would be a problem. Of course, it would be based on what's going on in the district and what other conflicts there may be. I would caution all of us that transparency is wonderful, but in this case making any more of what occurred more transparent than is written in the resolution would, I think, also be a violation of confidentiality. So it may just be that the public never hears the full story. And that's unfortunate, but it's something we're obligated to protect everyone's rights involved. So it's one of those tight ropes that we walk, that there are just certain things we cannot talk about and should not talk about. And it, it's very unsatisfactory, I know, to the public. It sounds like we're covering up, we're not telling the truth, when in fact we are following the the laws, legal advice and protecting everyone's rights in this situation. So that's all, you know, transparency, we have to walk a real tight rope. So be, all of us need to be careful.
Thank you for that note there, Director Jeffries. Okay. So this time, I guess we call for a vote on the second motion to table this item to allow for due process and allow Director Stoffer some time for his continued medical leave. We do, would expect a time for his continued medical leave. We do would expect a actual letter to state that medical leave and the timeframe of that medical leave as well. I guess, you know, as several have stated, also, you know, my concerns as well is that you know, we have a election coming up and then we have another board coming on board here with Director Koo and Director and myself leaving the board and it's not something that would like to put on the responsibility of a new board that has a lot of catching up to do on a lot of background that has happened. But anyway, just my thoughts on that. Director Jeffries.
I would say whatever we do needs to be done before the new board takes over because this is on us. We had the background. Yes, we've heard the information. Also, I would suggest when we vote tonight, we show our yes, using nays by raising our hands as well as speaking.
Yes. Actually, what we can do tonight is we can do a roll call vote. So Superintendent Prime, if you want to call for that, we'll do a so we're we will be voting on the second motion, which is to table this vote on this resolution at this time to further allow Director Stoffer time for his medical leave and to allow some additional time. So.
Okay, so President Gibson.
I.
Vice President Pickens.
I.
Director Koo.
Hi.
Director Jeffries.
Hi.
Director Stoffer.
Yes, and appreciated. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
I, yes, and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it passes with five yeses and zero nos.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you all this evening. I would like to add at the end here and just kind of tag along with Director Pickens to say that, you know, this this is not position it I think any of us wanted to be in tonight. This is not. I I know I've lost a lot of sleep over this. It's a difficult time. You know, I've worked with Director Stoffer for four years and he has done some things for the community, but you know, this is what it is. And we will be back at a later date to address this at that time. And with that said, it is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the attendees.
Thank you.